That was me texting you by the way. Yeah, so hold on. Alright, thank you.
Council meeting, if you have not seen 2021's order. Jimmy, would you give the invitation please?
You're welcome here in October, please, just like you grow, need blessings and pray that you be to this council, the order say, take care of goodness of the city. Pray that you be known to be done, we ask you, thank you Jesus, I have been.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to a screw with this agenda with an addition. Um, when we put addition in there, Tracy put this in front of me to add is an adjustment to 3328 Main Street. Their water is, it's not on, they've paid their deposit and everything, but there's work being done there. And Tracy, I'm, there is a garbage can at that property.
There is?
There is a garbage can at that property, yes, no? So he was minus, needed to minus that.
That sounds familiar.
Yeah, because there is a garbage can there.
Alright, perfect.
And. Okay, I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? I have, if nobody else does, um, I don't. I don't know if everybody's read the minutes, did proof for Jimmy on it? Yeah? All the minutes are in there, I have the issue with the minutes of June 28th, 2021.
I know what you have.
Ma'am? Um, I, I would like to see that table, if we can, um, I would like to give the tape. Because, um, one of the items on here is not listed correctly, I don't believe, but either way, I would, I'd like to sit table and, if that's the work talk.
Is that number four?
Yes ma'am.
How many courses we pay the residents for a workshop? Number four, and they consent agenda for a workshop, especially me to agenda on June 28th, if I do.
All in favor? Cause number two. So. Mayor report.
Okay, um. Some of the stuff, I think Tracy will probably end up talking to y'all about, uh, the feeble money came in for Sally, and so she'll give y'all details about that. Um, we have the federal money, the federal leave money's gonna be coming in, we've got to figure that out at the, at this next workshop, because it's, it's gotta happen. You know, by a certain time, um, in fact, I think the first report actually has to be filed by the end of the month.
September.
Okay.
Um.
September.
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am, so we're gonna have to do that, I know it says, um, something's gotta be filed by July, but we don't have anything to file for that, okay. So, so that y'all could be prepared to think about what you want to decide on, there are certain things that can, the money can be used for. It can be used for the citizens, it can be used for the infrastructure, um, it can be used for bonuses and pay raise increases for the employees. Which I'm sure they would like, it can be, it can be used for, um, well, in fact, I think we already decided we were gonna use part of it for the.
Fire department, right?
When that came in, so, so y'all know that we're gonna use part of it for the fire department. Then you've got the infrastructure, you've got the citizens, and then you've got the pay increases, and it's a special, uh, how that works, it's a special, um. I'm trying to remember now the name of the pay.
Premium pay.
Premium pay, and that can go towards employees, um, for an extended amount of time, employees that work during the, um.
Pandemic?
Pandemic, which ever followed our employees did, can also go for bonuses for them, because they worked during the pandemic. Um, our infrastructure has got to be looked at in this, so I just wanted to lay this out for y'all, those are kind of the things that we can use that money for. And we, we really need to nail that down at the workshop, Tracy, would you get them all a, a packet for their workshop, what, what the money can be spent for? And that way y'all know, and we can, then, we decide at the workshop, we can vote on it at the next meeting, and then she can have that ready for September. Because that'll be August that y'all decide, um. Let's see, what else I have, the. CDBG grant got approved for Church Street. So, we'll say that twice, so that everybody hears it.
I'm happy.
The CDBG grant got approved to pave Church Street.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Get me out, and we'll be two fee bumps. Before you get knocked over, I told you on the page.
So, we're super excited that that's gonna happen, um, I would like, for y'all to start thinking about the CDBG grant for this coming up time. Uh, Cook Circle, that's now a major highway in Vernon.
Yes, it's been running.
It's, it can't handle the traffic that's now going on it, so that might be something that y'all really wanna consider for the next CDBG grant, that'll be coming. When does that open?
I have no idea.
Okay, so I.
I think we have to close all the CDBG, CDBG, CDBG grants we have open before we can reapply for any, but I'll verify that.
Yeah, so, but that would be something really good for the next one, along with our plant, we are gonna apply, though, as soon as it comes open. For some federal money for the grinder for the sewer plant, because we've got to have that. Um, the other thing that was with that CDBG grant, though, is the, um.
What else?
The well rehabilitation for our wells. So that's exciting too, but I know that the citizens are, are more excited about Church Street.
Oh, and some of the list sections, if there's any money available, and that grant, by the way, was $650,000.
So, and that is, um, Fred Fox, and Tracy did all the paperwork and legwork on that, other than me being annoying and asking questions. Um, I think that's all I have. Because you're gonna tell them about Sally money.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
So, that's it for me.
Okay, well, does anybody else have anything for the mayor? The attorney's not present tonight, clerk's report.
Um, on August the 12th, from nine to twelve, and I believe that it's gonna be Eastern time, we're going to have a D E O on board, onboarding training session for that $650,000. If anybody, if a webinar, if any of y'all wants to join that.
When is that again?
August the 12th, and like I said, I think that's the time for Eastern.
What time?
Nine to twelve. So I believe it'll be eight till eleven our time. Um, we received an update from Alpha Foundation, they are willing to take the down payment and hold everything until we can get our budget upraised. If y'all want us to go ahead and move forward with that.
Y'all have that to be amended tomorrow, or? No.
But we're all gonna be discussing already.
Yeah, we ask, if, if that's possible, yes ma'am, that's why I asked if you want me to go ahead and manage it.
And that might be something, if everybody will read their pockets when she gets them for the federal money, it might be something we can use for that, for infrastructure, I don't know, but it might be.
What is the name of that county, Jersey?
Alpha. Foundation.
Well, no, we still wanna do it, right? Just.
But they said that they would go ahead and do claimant, I mean, do half of their work, and they did say that, because we asked them.
Um, Montrose Environmental will be on the square on July the 22nd, beginning at 12 noon, they're gonna be doing their monthly O and M and bio-injection activities, whatever that is.
How much longer did they say they're gonna be doing that, and when are they gonna move that structure?
They have not said on either of those issues.
When they come on that day to do it, let's find out.
I usually don't see them, do you guys ever see them when they come out and do work on the square?
What day is it?
July 22nd, I'll email them, see if they have anything that they did, any kind of updates that you get me.
Oh, and then we'll look it up and look and go on the trailer. Got something, oh, I just came to give my water bill straight down, who did I find out what's going on?
Eighty-nine.
It's done?
Yes, I wrote it on it.
What's the, uh, what's the details, I mean, how much?
Um, I think it was $32.58, but you'll be, will be adjusted, yes sir.
Why is it off?
Because we can only adjust the sewage.
Right, okay, thank y'all.
Absolutely.
Sit and visit.
Last week, we received feeble deposits in the amount of $81,771.66 for Sally. We have three outstanding projects left, which total 11,777.68. And I don't know when that will be, we're hitting our bank, but we're getting there. Um, yes, I emailed Ashley, our technics, and he emailed back and said that he's very excited to do our show next year, but he won't have any information for me till the beginning of the year. So I'll get packets from him, packages that he'll have available, but, um, you can expect increases because of the supply and shipping issues. Everybody's on route, so we're gonna check with him, have the candy wary, something, yeah.
And everyone that I spoke to during that whole process said the exact same thing, that everybody was going up, they had no other choice.
Some people said he thought it lasted long, but yeah.
The date is. Candice found it, she said it was fifteen.
It was, I, I hit my phone start, at the start, when the first one went off, and when the finale was finished, and it was exactly fifteen minutes.
I have heard that it was the best show ever.
I heard that from several people.
A lot of people said he thought it was long after.
It's because it was so good.
It was good, though.
Um, the last thing, I did provide everyone with a revenue and expenditure report from last year, so that you can compare it to what we've done so far this year.
Thank you.
Is all you have, Tracy?
That's it.
I have a question, on the webinar, will you be sending us the information, the link to that?
Yes ma'am, I will.
Thank you. Our chief report. Have you heard from?
He is running, oh, there he is.
Just in time.
Go Thomas, sir.
Start off, uh, did it hear?
Now.
So, uh, Hebrew, they signed that brush truck over to us, to break, well, I don't know how, but they signed it to us, so it's loans to us now. It's, they can hold us for a little while, we can get ours, and ours have been ordered, I guess it'll be it.
Give me the dead insurance?
Next year.
Give the insurance?
I'll look at this year, but we ain't using it, because it don't work right now.
Oh, okay.
Not that one, but I don't know when you have it.
Still working, yeah, well, I think it's a battery, better be a battery.
Do we need to take it somewhere, though, or what?
I, I'll take it and get it to my truck, so we can make it.
Found out if, about the tag and insurance on the plate, but we're gonna have to add that.
We've got the tag, um, sitting in my office, so I'll take it out there, and I'll take care of all that.
Yeah, it's insurance in the county, we know that.
Did you get that, Tracy?
I called, we got a structural fire today.
Okay, are you with it?
We had a structural fire today, well, about this morning, Holly Hill, or something, I don't know, Puff Moss Hill. That wasn't good. Coming out, we have a meeting coming up, next, I want to say, next two, that's, uh, at the station, we're training. And that's all I got.
We appreciate you.
Wait a minute, did, did the council recognize him for, for what he was just honored for?
He's a hometown hero.
Yeah, well, some of us did on Facebook, but, but we really do appreciate it.
We're very proud of having you.
Very proud of you.
He was a hometown hero in Baytown, and in Vernon, thank you very much.
Ray Grace, your report.
I do have an update for him, um, the $50,000 for that grant was approved.
Great.
So I'm waiting on more corrections than that as well.
So that.
It's supposed to sports play.
Yes, it is, because it's sports, like, only, but still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's great, man, and all of them.
Big, yeah.
Does it work for the door?
It just doesn't grasp, no water flowing. We're good.
I have an update, um, Jason did call, um, they, one of the pumps at High Press, or, I'm sorry, the school mill workstation is down. They think that it had a power surge that just fried a bunch of the electrical system. Shepherd came out and gave him a $4,000, if we can add that to the agenda, but I'm also checking with the insurance to see if there's any way they can help with that.
And what was the name of the government?
Shepherd.
That's the one that's been helping him.
They've been helping a lot, thank you Jimmy. Also, um, his mom did have sertratina, she had a biopsy, they're keeping her overnight because her lung collapsed, but they expected it, so, she's in good hands.
Public registration, Angela Bradley of Emerald Coast Regional Planning Council. Hello, this is Bradley.
Hi, thank you very much, it's not in my gears, I'll talk loud, I can do that. Um, thank you very much, council, for allowing me to come and speak to you and the mayor. Um, I am here on behalf of Emerald Coast Regional Planning Council, I am a planner and project manager for this project I'm about to introduce you to. It is called Rural Regional Transportation Plan and Pilot Project. Um, we're really excited about this project, because DOT has asked us to enter into a contract, which we have done, to start and look at rural regional areas. So, um, even DOT secretary, Secretary Tivo, has talked about this project, and talked about hopefully focusing in on the rural areas. And the needs of, um, the transportation for these rural areas. I, like I said, I'm with the Regional Planning Council, and there's 10 RPCs throughout the state, um, of course, we are the, the furthest region. And we cover all of Northwest Florida, so, and I, I live in Bay County, and we have an office in Bay County. Um, we are also an entity that is created by Florida statute, and we are multi-purpose. And we help a lot of local governments with a wide, wide variety, or wide variety of, um, things like planning, grants. Looks like y'all don't really know grants, um, and we do it on a smaller scale, and, than what your consultants would do. We actually have a scale for small rural areas, so, if you ever need any help, we have a bunch of planners, grant writers, that sort of thing. Um, so what I'm here to talk to you about today is, there are TPOs within our area, and if you don't know what a TPO is, it's a transportation planning organization. And I'm on page three, if you've got that hand now, I'm sorry, I'm so used to doing this PowerPoint, it's throwing me off a little bit. So, which is this page, showing the, um, the map of the area. So, Bay, Okaloosa, Walton, and Escambia, Alabama, are all in what we call regional rural, or regional transportation organizations. Um, Washington County, Holmes, parts of Walton, Okaloosa, parts of Escambia, and Santa Rosa are not. And the reason why is because you have to have 50,000 in population in an urban area to be part of the urbanized transportation planning organization. So the reason why I'm, I'm kind of telling you this and explaining this to you is because we are looking at creating a rural transportation organization. Um, for everyone within Northwest Florida, so anyone that's not in an urbanized transportation organization, that is outside of that boundary. We're looking at creating a rural transportation organization through this project. So a TPO is designed to bring everybody together and talk about the needs of the region, which means all roads, um, maintenance, um, widening, um, so. All kinds of different needs, updates, that you need from your community and throughout the region. So that's what this project is basically about, so DOT has asked us to enter into a contract, like I said. To create this rural regional transportation organization and a long-range transportation plan. So this has never been done in the state of Florida, we are the first in Northwest Florida. So, um, we feel honored, and we really, really want this project to work out. If this project works out and gets off the ground, then they're gonna duplicate it in the rest of Florida. So other states have it, Alabama, Georgia, you can even Google, um, rural regional transportation plan, or regional, or rural transportation planning organization, and you'll see. That other states have it, we're just kind of behind a little bit in Florida, but at the same time, now we have a secretary that really wants to focus on rural needs. In fact, he's spoken throughout the state about that, and wanting to hear from our rural communities. We don't want you to feel like you've been forgotten, and this project is a long-term project, this is like step one, we're just coming to talk to everybody. We went to Washington County last month, we went to Perryville, we're hitting all, um, I've been on the road a lot, so we're hitting all the, um, local jurisdictions. That are outside of the urbanized areas within Northwest Florida. So what they do is, we create these, and this is in your packet as well, is these long-range transportation plans. And you'll see kind of snapshots of ones that we've done for the urbanized area, and basically what it is, is it's a list of needs. Not saying they're all gonna be funded, but it's a list of needs, and once you get this, get these needs actually in a plan. Then we can take this plan to DOT and say, hey, are there any grants, how can we start thinking about funding the needs for the rural areas?
So that, I'm fine, I'll, I'll wait for questions, ma'am.
Oh, no, go ahead, no, I'm fine.
So that covers also city roads that are not county maintained, and does it cover non-county maintained roads such as? I know in Bay County, there's roads that, there are street names, but the county does not maintain them, um, they're in horrible conditions. Let's go over towards the Youngstown area, Youngstown Fountain area, does it cover that type of?
It does not cover local roads. It would be your regional, your main roads, like your collectors and arterials, now if they feed into a major road, then that can be a discussion. If people are using them a lot, I think I heard you mention a road earlier, yeah.
It's a city, it's a city road, so that's something that they would consider?
That is something that can be considered, yes. And not only are we looking at, like I said, widening, you may not need widening, but maintenance, and, um, maybe you need adjustments to lights, and that sort of thing. So, I mean, kind of all things are on the table, as far as that.
Is that another question as well?
Okay. Yes ma'am.
Do we come with sewer pipes, the pipe that go on the ground and come out with other inner road?
No, these are just roadways, DOT.
Oh, you don't grow?
DOT.
Or they do, we do our roads, they're gonna put new pipes, drain pipe in?
Uh, Florida DOT usually just looks at the roadway itself, and then whatever entity owns the pipes would do that. So, like resurfacing, or widening. Um, so, this is to identify projects. Um, again, this is the first step, this is a foot in the door, this project itself is gonna take until 2023 to finish. Um, but if you look at the timeline here, what we're doing now is we are going around and just introducing the local government to this project. And then we're starting our public involvement plan, and then at some point, these dates are a little bit off because of everybody's agendas and that sort of thing. So the first one, we'll probably still be working through the local governments in August or September. Um, then we're gonna create what we call a, um, transportation advisory committee. And the county will appoint some people from the jurisdiction to serve on that committee. And then there, right now, because we don't have a formal regional transportation organization, we're just starting. Um, Emerald Coast Regional Planning Council Board serves as the final kind of say and adopts it. I don't know if you're a part of the Regional Planning Council, um, but even if you're not, you can still, of course, participate. It's just when it comes to the final vote, it will go before that entity. Um, I don't know, do you know if you're, okay. So you might wanna think about joining, just because at the final vote, that's who's gonna have to say in the end, is voting on the documents themselves. So the technical advisory committee will be 14 members, non-elected, so we'll work with maybe your public works director, or clerk, or planner, I don't know what kind of staff you have, but who would work with them. And then, um, of course, if you don't have staff that can help, then we'll work with the elected officials. Um, it's just, you know, it gets, like you know, in the sunshine, it gets kind of hairy when it comes to having a bunch of elected officials from all across the region in one board. But, so that's why we're looking at this TAC to be the advisory committee, and then they would make recommendations to the ECRC board. And if you're part of that board, then you're allowed to have an elected official on that board, to serve as representative for your area. And again, this is the process we're going after just to get the plan started, this structure may or may not change. Once we establish the regional long-range plan, and then, um, the, uh, transportation, the rural transportation organization, so. Again, we're in partnership with DOT, um, this is to help them develop their five-year work program, and I don't know if you work with DOT on their work program at all, or have any. And I don't know if you work with DOT on their work program at all or have any kind of dialogue with Florida Department of Transportation for your roads. But if you don't, this will help that. And if you do, then this will help bring what your needs are even further. So what I need from y'all is participation. That's, again, like I said, this is the beginning of the project. I am the project manager. Um, we're just letting everybody know about the project, that DOT wants this project, they want to hear from the rural areas. Um, but we need local government participation. That is key to make this project work. And again, the, um, it would be a long-range plan, so I'm not saying anything would happen overnight, but it's a start. And it's something I think that is needed in our area because the rural areas in other places have told me that they kind of feel forgotten and they don't have a lot of interaction with DOT. So we're, DOT recognizes that and we're here to help bridge that gap and start that interaction and get a written plan in place. That's the key is getting this stuff in writing. And so what you would do is you'd revisit this plan every few years, sit down. And then your plan, again, it's a long-range plan, could have five hundred projects on it. But the TPO, the rural TPO would rank those projects and decide what the priority is. And that would be hopefully incorporated into DOT's work program. Again, it's finding grant money, it's helping DOT find money, but at least they have an idea once we get this written of what is needed in the rural areas. So this mechanism, like we do in the urban areas, which that process has been around for a very, very long time and it is through Florida statute, um, DOT actually doesn't have to do this process, but they want to do this process. It's just to collaborate on transportation needs. And of course, what happens in Washington County, Carriville, Ebro, your surrounding areas impacts what happens here, especially on roads. They don't just stop at jurisdictional lines. So that's why we want to bring you all together to write down these projects, to develop this list and then move forward. So, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you should have gotten a flyer too, did I send you the flyer? Okay, if you don't have enough, I can give you more.
I can wait, I'll be.
Okay. And the website for this project is on the bottom of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kimberly Powell, Legendary Rural Maintenance.
I've got some visuals for y'all, so that we can walk through it together.
Y'all remember whenever everybody asks me to get all the information, we get everything together. So I called legendary, got them to get stuff together. I think I was in meeting probably about, uh, four weeks ago.
All right, so in the first of your pamphlet, um, we've kind of broke it down in sections. We started with Highway seventy-nine. We went through and took these pictures yesterday so that we would have kind of idea exactly what it looks like right now. And each one of these, as you go through, in each one of the pictures, you'll see, I mean, what you can tell, whether you can see the sidewalk or not see the sidewalk. Now, the third page you have in here, or fourth page, fourth page you have in here is going to have a breakdown for you as to exactly what that surface would cover. Everything it covers, it tells you how far it covers from Paquon Road to the end of the curb and gutter, how much it would be for each cut, and how it would be considered for nineteen cuts for a year. And then the total amount for the year itself. Now, the set, the next section, the next picture is the one that is for two seventy-seven, starts at elementary and is going to go all the way to the city square, right down by the street by D's. And we'll, and that, it also, it breaks it down exactly, the exact same things that we're going to do there, gives you the per-cut price, so every time it's done, and then what it would be for the total for the year, for a year, which is nineteen cuts. The next one's going to be for a city square. Now, that one, it, it's wrote down from the north sidewalk directly and the south sidewalk directly related to it. And if we have a schedule of events ahead of time, then we try to schedule everything around where that that will be done before anything hap, any kind of events happen.
So I wouldn't be calling you today that there's going to be something at the cemetery begging?
Well, if it happens, it happens. We broke these down in each individual sections that way if there's something you, is more important than one other section or anything in that nature or like budget coming up, we don't know what budget looks like. So we broke it down, we're going to be a little easier to look at price-wise. The next one's going to be city hall. Most of our, actually all of them, all of our services are going to include mowing, edging, weed eating, hedges, chemical application if needed and where needed, um, blowing everything off, pickup and removal of trash. And we estimate a time, um, to be fairly quick. If we, if we did the whole thing from one week, one, start at one time and end, it'd be, what would we say in Jordan, like four days? Three or four days from one end of the city to the other to do everything that's in this packet.
You pay seventy-nine hours, that mean cut grass and stuff?
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all know how forty, fifty dollars a year to cut grass?
Do we do what now?
Forty, forty or fifty dollars a year to cut grass and run it?
No, ma'am.
Oh, can I get a copper?
I'm sure you can.
That's a lot of money to cut grass. I'm telling you, that's a hot commodity, probably good grass.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Does your hedge trimming include getting the poison out and the trees that are growing in the hedges that aren't supposed to be there?
Most of the time we try to do that. We don't try to, um, do any kind of chemicals around our hedges so that we don't kill the plant first off, but if there's a vine growing, we try to clip it at the bottom to try to minimize the growth. If we can't get it.
As long as there's a bacterial infection talking about that, we try our best to hand it, can't root out or something like that.
But like I said, we kind of broke it down like this because that way it'd be easier if you wanted to do it in an all apart kind of thing. Because like I said, I don't know what our budget looks like. The retention pond, we have that set up in here, the wrecked building or field setup. And the next to the last page in here gives all the city streets that we were told. So you would, so yeah, I see Yellow Jacket, it's not in here, McFatter, it's not in here. That we, this is the list of streets we were given.
So this is about all the streets?
This is the only streets we were given to look at.
And that was listed out.
Okay.
That's what you cross.
The streets literally listed, yes, ma'am.
Yellow Jacket, um, and everything over all the, um, all the streets on the other side of, ma'am, this is just one side.
Yeah, I listed out each, all the streets that we were actually given, list-wise.
So that was seventy-nine, two seventy-seven, the city square, the city hall, the retention pond, the old wrecked field, Malt Hill Road, Shady Road, Park, and city streets.
Right, the page right before that should give you the whole list. Church, Pompey, Armstrong, Hook Circle, I think it's Saff Avenue? Okay. Uh, Court Avenue, Dalton, Sasser Avenue, Yon Avenue, Hudson, and Dawkins. That's the list we were given. And the last page, it breaks it down so you have a per-cut and you have the yearly. Um, we didn't put a complete total on here because we all know that sticker shop hurts. And we know that it's easier for us to break it down and you consider what you want to work for. The liability issue with hiring more people and salary and all that is going to be way more than the sticker shop issue. Because with us doing it, it takes liability off the city.
I have to go ask them to say, as long as we just hire this little lady and get the prison to do it like we did a long time ago.
One of the reasons that we don't have a prisoner to do it is because we don't have someone that is certified too?
They certified, they kept my money clean when I was here.
But they're not, we're not certified at this point.
Oh, because my truck streams were very clean.
And I don't have a problem with you.
They cut a little tram road behind his house too, Mr. Brock here, and get it cleaned as if Mr. Brock, so prison. They went through that little alley there and got it cleaned, no water draining up in the big room, they didn't want it. Hey, my water's a pity. You're not going home. It is going home.
Actually, I'll hit under thirty. My water war, you're, you're next on the list. Does anybody have anything for us?
First of all, I do have a question. We, the city of Vernon cannot afford this. I pay you right off the bat, we can't afford it. I mean, I, we don't have a hundred thousand dollars to pay for somebody to cut grass.
I understand that, yes, ma'am. And that's why I broke it down.
I'd be fine with you right up.
We don't have. I understand, yes, ma'am. And that's why I broke it down like, for example, if you feel as though the most important place is going to be Highway seventy-nine, then just use Highway seventy-nine. If it's the city square and the city hall, then that's fine too. I mean.
Our city employees get paid, the city of Vernon get paid to do Highway seventy-nine.
And, and how much, how many times have I given?
Listen, listen to me. There's a lot of water out there, okay? There's a lot of water out there. The city of Vernon cannot, we, we just don't have the money to be doing all these things. Come on. You know, what, you want to break the city? Come on.
Let me ask you this, how many, how many times have we not done something?
I'm trying to, I don't trust anyone, I'm not doing this. I mean, that's a lot of money.
And that's what we're saying is that you don't have to choose just everything, it is paid. You can choose what you want.
We still need to get that money from the county.
Correct.
We still, we still need, the city of Vernon needs that money that we get from their people.
And that's the reason I'm saying let's, let's wait till, and that's what I told her, I said, we're going to have to wait and see what the budget looks like.
Why don't we set, discuss this in a workshop where we?
Yeah, that's right. And that's why I brought it, that's why I set it up the way I did. That way you can look at everything and you could, that's why I did what I did.
Yes, ma'am. Well, all I'm saying is, there's a lot to talk about.
I appreciate you breaking it down. I know you're doing, breaking the city down like you did, uh, and setting on a couple of streets, but I appreciate it and I know what Chad is doing. You know, you can choose down the line. It does need to be discussed in a workshop.
I mean, because if, if, for example, when the time comes and you get ready to do budget, if you see that you have three thousand dollars for a year to get someone to do the city hall or the town square, then that's where that's at, that's why I broke it down the way I did. You don't have to do it all at one time, that's not what I'm saying, not by long shot. I mean, it's easier to swallow three thousand for twelve months than it is the other.
Yeah. And I see where you're coming from.
Right, and I understand that, that's why I broke it down a little bit, a little bit easier.
But I don't spend city money like that, that ain't mine.
Correct.
I mean, I, I'm here. I am.
I do want to say this, they are doing a good job at the cemetery. And I, I noticed particularly when the garden club put the flags out there for Fourth of July, the only thing was I saw poison growing up in some of the bushes and I've just addressed that with him and we're going to talk about that. But other than that, I mean, the edging, the cutting, everything looks nice.
Well, and I appreciate the breakdown and this way we can sit down and see what, you know, if something needs to be done, where it needs to be done at, or what. And I'm with Ms. Quinn on what the county's paying us, that we need to do and that, but there's a lot more in here, so I think we just need to sit down and talk about it.
Okay. No problem, that's my thought.
And this process is good for thirty days, it says?
Well, I put that on everything.
Okay.
Me, everybody knows that the, the cost of everything goes up within thirty days, it don't matter who you are. And we did this, in this aspect, I put this on everything that we do.
Okay, I understand.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Oh, here's the H one. She cut here.
Okay, Ms. Linda Wilson, Public Participation.
I'm, I'm worried about it. I don't believe it, I've been three days a week. I got one, and we were there, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. I don't have no belief, Larry Rain checking. He checking. When I got here, this guy, he took the roof and everything away. And, um, he checking me, I couldn't know what I care, and he was listening.
Tracy has a big check.
She said it's not spinning or anything for leak.
I'll be there, uh, my first cut it on. And a couple days later, you know, I just got a week, you know? I was on and I come in three days and then I leave and I might not come back for two days. So I might not come for a week.
So the meter's been checked, it's been very bad, there's nothing wrong with the meter and there's no leak. Is it possible that stuff that was left on or anything like that?
Anybody washing vehicles or anything there? Anybody washing cars or anything?
The only thing I found in my front yard when I came in one day was a picture ID from someone from Alabama, a check card, right around that oak tree. But I took it up to the black and white and I asked them about it, they said, was it lost and found? So now they got fined. So I thought, I do put lost and found in the black and white. I didn't take it to the sheriff's department, I took it to the black and white. I just see him in town and I gave it to him. He said, that's your car? I said, no, I found him from in my yard.
What's her usual monthly?
The thing is she moved in last month.
I paid thirty-six dollars.
She has fifteen daddies. And it was prorated at that time for thirty, right at thirty-two dollars.
Is this where, uh, never mind. You're living in your daddy's old place?
Yes. Well, I got three down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Larry Wayne checked. We cut the meter on, we looked, and I cut it back off. And the meter don't be moving when I put it off.
Have y'all, we reread it again, what does it look like for usage for the time we read it for the next time we read it?
I could take her averages from last month.
Coming days, which is there?
Sixteen days. I can take that average, because it was 4,000 gallons. Divide that by the 16 days, she was there to figure out an average of how much she used per day and then base the adjustment off of that.
I would do it two days, two weeks.
I mean, nobody uses 47,000 gallons, nobody does. I mean, if you had a water hose running for a month, there wouldn't be.
I would do it two days this month, two weeks.
I don't even think that the restaurants are using this much. Something's wrong there. She said no leaks, she said no leaks.
No leaks, Larry, my cousin Larry Wayne checked. We cut it, I cut it on, he looked, on the house there, like, no leaks. I cut it off, and the meter's not even moving.
So, the meter's been checked again and it's going to be high again this, on the next bill?
We'll go next week, we need to read it next week.
I've been at two weeks.
I thought that I heard you say that y'all had checked again.
We had checked last month, but then the highway left spinning, this month was the highway, last month was bad.
He checked it on the rereads and it wasn't spinning then.
No, I don't know.
Then you told it's not running inside?
Nope.
Well, if we showed it on the meter.
I don't know, we were talking about it.
It would have been turning, you'd be told.
I had it, I had it on Cook Circle, it was 103,000 gallons one month. The meter, if you can't see it, when it turns, it's barely, just really watch it for a while to watch it turn.
You don't want to adjust it and then if it's the same next month, there's got to be some kind of problem.
I would do it two weeks. July 4th up until Sunday. With my break here.
This would have been from May 21st through June 25th?
May 25th. Maybe a couple of days, but not that many. But I'd go two weeks. On the fourth day, I was there, up until Sunday. For July, up until Sunday.
So, is that what you guys want me to do? Average what she used last month?
So, we need to bed on a zip address, maybe? Or if you want to do it, y'all would bed on the mail?
So, I'll have to figure what it was and how much the charges are late?
Well, that's strategic and cut off is?
Tomorrow. Or not, well, cut off to the next morning, but everything's going to be paid by tomorrow at five?
So, do y'all do what Tracy said and like work in the adjustment office? Prorated days, or how y'all handle it?
I would think do it, but then if it's, if it's high again, there's a, there's a problem.
Yeah.
So, that's an average of 250 gallons per day from last month?
Well, I guess.
That was when she was here for 16, or charged 16 days.
City employees can't go, um, they're probably seeing if there's something torn out of her in the house.
They don't have to, Larry Wayne did.
Yeah, but then if we show, would you show the meter?
What we're saying is we have to verify.
We're saying that it's a toll, but it wasn't, it wasn't. Or somebody, if she's not there and somebody was there.
That's what I said too.
So, if I go based on the 250 gallons a day, it's going to be 8,500 gallons that she's charged instead of 47,000?
So, that'd be around $70 or something, probably, probably around $70. Round about, that's just in that.
I'm going to get an ID from the black and white and check it, I'm going to show you guys. That's fine with me. What else can you do?
Then we see, look again.
If it's this high again next month, yeah.
You have to have a plumber come in.
She'll have to have a plumber come in to check. Okay, so we're going to put it on the agenda to just, for prorated days? Tracy?
Yes, ma'am, for 8,500 gallons.
But now, Ms. Wilson, you'll have to come pay it tomorrow.
Okay.
And then if there's an issue next month, you'll probably end up having to get a plumber from having a.
We don't issue call them. I took a lock out there, who the hell lock on their locker? You can leave there, then you won't get no water until I get the key out there and unlock it.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, guys, and I'm coming back to this immediately.
Okay, new business, motion to approve $164.88. A sewer credit adjustment to account 463. The water hose was left on. Do I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Motion to approve $1,646.03. Sewer and late fees, credit adjustments set that on property. Do I have a motion to approve? Discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Motion to approve Aunt Lebron's bid to paint the community center for $8,700. Do I have a motion to approve? Second? Discussion?
I do have a question on that they are approved, but was that for cleaner pressure washing outside?
No, ma'am.
Did we add that though? It looked so bad, it looked so bad outside. Anyway, sorry, go ahead.
All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Motion to approve city of Vernon purchasing policy and procedure in resolution 21-170.
Do we have that drawn up?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's the next, so, last little section there. The last section, actually, is this the last part? And that would put us at like, 4, right at like 1,500, we'd just get two phone quotes and then do it without having to do seal bids?
Correct.
So, in this resolution, do I need to read all of it?
No, ma'am, that's not necessary.
That top part on the page.
Yeah, on the last page. Resolution number 21-170, a resolution of the city council of the city of Vernon, Florida, providing for the adoption of a municipal purchasing policy and procedure. Do I have a motion to approve? Second? Discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Motion to approve Washington County broadband tower proposal, do I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second, you said the one F P.
Discussion?
This is just basically to approve them to change the flow. So, that they can put the towers wherever.
Wherever?
The two places. whichever one they choose, and I'm not sure which one they're going to put it at.
All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
Timmy's here. I didn't write them in, I didn't write.
Yeah, we are, we're not through, but if you want to go ahead, Timothy, do you have anything to the red?
Sir, I did let them know that your per-cut was approved.
It was for 40?
Yes, sir. $50,000.
Where's the next stage on that?
Waiting. Waiting to hear what the next step is.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, number six, motion to pay the deposit to ALFA with them holding that process until after we work out the budget.
So, they're not going to raise the price or anything?
According to the email that we all received, they were willing to stay at that price. So, we're just, this is a motion to pay the, what's the amount, first? A motion to pay a deposit of $3,000 to ALFA. Do I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, number seven, I need a motion to approve payment to Shepherd.
For the plan?
Okay, somebody, I heard a second, did we get a motion? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Number eight, Ms. Linda Wilson, can I have a motion? Can I have a motion to approve adjusting 8,500 gallons from her water bill? Second? Discussion? All in favor?
A motion to approve it to 8,500 gallons.
Eighty-five, to 8,500.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, all in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Does anybody have anything else?
Make a motion where a journey.
I said it.
I have asked for a motion to darn it.
He said if anybody have anything else, that's what I ask.
He has a motion to approve.
Motion to darn second. Motion carried.